All right, I officially got the thumbs up. We can go ahead and get our city commission meeting started. If you can, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city commission meeting tonight. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and are ready to begin our Christmas festivities. And I'm sure one of our Christmas festivity activities this week is going to be shared by City Manager Leon, so I won't steal her thunder, but bring on the Christmas season. So I hear Small Business Saturday was very busy, and so appreciate all of you shopping local and continue to do that. So happy holidays, I guess, now we've officially switched into. All right, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denner.
Here.
Item two under routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 13th, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Moser, I do have a correction to propose. Action 23306 has Commissioner Johnson making a motion to observe Indigenous Peoples' Day for the next two years, and his actual motion was to observe Native American Day for the next two years. Some perhaps see those terms as interchangeable, but there is a difference between the two, and I think our minutes should reflect the actual motion as it was made.
Excuse me, you said it's supposed to say Native American Day instead of?
That was the motion as voiced by Nathan, and there is a difference between the two, or I wouldn't bring it up.
Thank you, Brian. All right, you got that noted out? All right, then ask for approval of the minutes with the correction made by Commissioner Hanoff.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion, other commission discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye, opposed nay, anybody abstaining? All right. Number three under routine business is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under routine business is the City Manager's report, so I will turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Couple things for you commissioners to be mindful of. You were invited to attend the Yankton County Drug Court graduation ceremony and reception to follow. That's being held Wednesday, December 6th at 1:30 PM, and that's at the Yankton County Safety Center on the second floor in courtroom A. So if you all would like to attend, you've been invited by Sharon Kraft, and I can give you, she's the coordinator for Yankton and Mitchell Drug and DUI Court, and could certainly give you her contact information. I'm notifying you here at the public meeting so that if there would happen to be a quorum present, the press knows that there is no city business to be discussed. If you've never been to one of those, they're kind of a nice little ceremony and recognize people who've gone through that certification or that coursework. So you're invited to that. If you're interested, let me know if you want the actual invitation. Also, I'll be reaching out to Commissioners Moser, Johnson, and Villanueva specifically regarding availability for our meeting time with the Yankton School District and those representatives from the district who serve on the city school committee. We have a shared space with them, as you know, in the Summit Activity Center, and we're working on trying to figure out some logistics on wrestling and how that's impacting our membership and what our members are doing and still accommodating the school. So I've asked Dr. Kindle if we can call that city school committee together in the short-term future, and I'll be working with those commissioners on their availability. You have on your agenda tonight a number of items that pertain to video lottery. In some instances, we have a recommendation. In some instances, it says we need direction in order to tell you what recommendation we would give you. If the commission would find it useful, we think it would be useful to have Ross give you a brief description of what we're asking or what's being proposed or what's being asked of you in front of each item, because they very quickly get complex and hard to understand. So we pushed that up to the last minute we possibly could in getting materials out, because some of the requests depend upon other requests. So we want to make sure you're clear on what's being brought forward. So if you will do that, he can give you a little bit of description before you start hearing the actual proposal and before you start deliberating on that. Tonight, under executive session, I thought we would have a legal and contractual item to discuss. We do not, but we will still request an executive session, because as is printed in your agenda, we have some personnel matters that we need to discuss. So we would like to leave that. I just want to be transparent about what it is we're going to be talking about. It will be personnel issues, no action following the executive session. You should be aware, and the community should be aware, that we have been contacted by our vendor who will be helping us change out water meters. So we talked about that earlier in the year, and they think that that might be happening yet this winter. So we are going to put together, help work with them to put together a letter to residents. We're going to post that letter on social media and work with Connecting Cultures on getting that letter also in Spanish, so that people are familiar with that. If they see that, they know it's not a scam, but in fact, we are working on changing water meters in town, and we need their help, because we need access to their meter, which is in the home. So we realize for some people, you know, may not understand what's happening there, but every so often, our meters need to be turned over, and so that's what we're doing there. So we'll have more information on social media, but utilities ask that, I bring that forward. We have this evening our EMS director with us. I'm going to be contacting those of you who serve on the city-county planning meeting, because I've been invited to an update meeting on the EMS ambulance study happening, I believe, next week. So I'll be inviting those of you, and I can't remember who it is right now, but who are on that committee, if you want to attend that update, and then I'll provide a full update to the commission thereafter. This week, some exciting things happening. On Thursday, of course, we have the holiday parade of lights. I spoke with Luke Yeomans today, and he said, I think he has 75 floats, which would make us think we're the biggest light parade right now in the state, maybe? So we're excited about that. One feature float will include the mayor and I freezing in the same convertible that we were very warm in just a few months ago. So I told her that frozen tomatoes hurt a lot more than the soft ones, but at least there's not enough snow for snowballs. Also, on Friday, we have our city Christmas party. We'll be at downtown at the Meridian Venue. I've already notified the press for possible quorum. We have Jeff Erickson from KYNT helping us celebrate, and so we're looking forward to having a good time figuring out who the employee of the year is and just celebrating a special time of year that it is. So many of us will be attending that on Friday evening. If there's no questions for me, Mayor, I'll let you get to your business. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions from you.
Are there any questions from the commission for the city manager?
I do have one, going back to the water meter replacement program. Do you know if, you know, I run into this one in my line of work where utilities are being changed to a new owner, and the shut-off valve is corroded or cemented in place or buried, and there's additional expense to get to that to replace the valve? Or, because I imagine you have to shut the water off to replace the meter, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm assuming you're going to have to. Do you know if there is those expenses, that if they discover those issues, will it be borne on the homeowner or the tenant, not the tenant, the building owner, or would that be part of that program?
I believe the valve belongs to the property owner, and they're responsible. I'll double-check and clarify with Kyle, but...
That's typical what I see. I just didn't know if with the program, they would be covering, because the homeowner may not know about it, and it should be fixed, right? But they may not want to fix it.
That's correct. So that's, and that is their responsibility, and that would be a private plumber. They might not even know that it's in poor repair, so that's possible.
Okay, just so people might be aware.
That'll be clarified in the letter. People still won't like it if that's the case.
But thank you.
Other questions for the city manager? All right, seeing no microphones come on, we will move on to then public appearance. We do have one scheduled public appearance tonight, so we will start with Lucas Johnson of Banner Engineering, who is here tonight to update the commission on bridge inspections. So I will turn it over to him, and then we will open it up to everyone else after he's done presenting. So Lucas, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening. My name is Lucas Johnson. I'm a civil engineer with Banner Associates out of their Vermillion office. I've been a professional engineer since 2006, and I have over 20 years of bridge inspection experience. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the annual inspections that I perform this fall in the city of Yankton. The bridge inspection program, there is a requirement that at a minimum of every two years, bridges be inspected that are over 20-foot in width. So this year, there were three inspections performed for the annual bridges. That's the 23rd Street, Cedar Street, and the Locust Street Bridge. Overall, there are 12 bridges in the city of Yankton that meet that 20-foot requirement. Of those, 10 are considered in good condition, while two are in poor condition. Those two are the Cedar Street Bridge and the 23rd Street Bridge. The Cedar Street Bridge was previously posted at 75% of legal loads due to the overall condition of that structure. This year, we are recommending that the 23rd Street Bridge now be posted at 70% of legal loads due to the deterioration of the shear connections between the double-T units. I recently met with Adam Haberman and Brad Moser to discuss the annual inspections. In that meeting, I recommended that the 23rd Street Bridge be posted. We also discussed the Cedar Street structure replacement and the schedule for that, and we discussed getting the ball rolling on the preliminary engineering for the 23rd Street Bridge. There were other more minor repairs recommended during the meeting that are contained in the inspection reports. The 23rd Street Bridge was constructed in 1976, so at almost 50 years old, it is beginning to show its condition, and that's evident in the spalling in the concrete. A closer look would, you'd be able to see some cracking, and especially between the deck units in the grout areas, and that's where the issue exists with water migrating through the deck. It's an underside of the bridge. The concrete portion on the top is the superstructure. The timber portion in the middle of the picture is the substructure. Overall, they look like they're in pretty good condition in this view, but when one looks up, you can see the evidence of the rust staining, and that's the shear connections, which is reinforcement steel between the deck units that has become compromised. The white is considered efflorescence, and that's also an indication that water is migrating through the deck. This is another photo. Down the middle of the photo, you can see a crack, and that is fairly typical of this structure. Moving on to the Locust Street Bridge, it was constructed in 1984. It is of a similar construction type with the double-T units for a substructure. However, when we look between these, we don't see quite the deterioration that we do on the 23rd Street Bridge. There is evidence of some rust staining that may or may not show up very well. That's orange in the top-third portion of the photo. It's why this bridge is on an annual inspection, and we'd like to keep taking a look at it every year so that we can monitor that situation. This is one of the steel pile at the Butman Back Wall, where we are starting to see some signs of section loss. However, I don't think it's significant enough where we would need to consider posting this bridge at this time. The Cedar Street Bridge was constructed in 1978. It is currently programmed for replacement in 2025. I did not see any issues with this structure different than what was seen in last year's inspection. It's double-T construction with steel pile. You see what's typical is the rust and section loss at the ground line of those pile, but this bridge will be able to remain at 75% of legal loads for the time being. The 23rd Street Bridge and the Cedar Street Bridge replacements are being funded through the BIG program. That's the Bridge Improvement Grant. That's where SDDOT pays for 80% of the replacement, and the city pays for 20%. So that's an overview of the three bridges that I inspected this inspection cycle. If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Do you back up one slide? On those rust areas there at the base, isn't it possible to somehow reinforce those without actually replacing the entire bridge?
I have seen that done on county structures, where they would put a concrete collar around them, yes. It's, I couldn't say how much life you'd gain out of it by doing that. What you're doing is you're not able to see it anymore, and it's not something, it's not a repair I would recommend for that reason, as it can continue its deterioration, but you wouldn't be able to see it at that point.
With the 23rd Street Bridge, if you said what the low limit would be now, I didn't catch it, so can you share what that would be?
70% of legal loads, which is 18-ton for a single unit, and I'm going to have to look at that. I believe that's 30-ton for a multi-unit truck. I do have approximate weights of vehicles. I found this on the Pennsylvania DOT website to give you an idea of where that 18-ton and 30-ton falls. An ambulance would be considered a single unit. Anything that cannot be disconnected easily would be considered a single unit. With the cement truck would also be a single unit. So it would restrict many of those vehicles.
My question is maybe more for Adam. When you talk about posting or doing restrictions, one, do we currently have that in place based off your meeting with Banner Engineering? And if so, how is that then notified? Because if some of these are no longer restricted, how do people know this?
So that Mr. Johnson's report's been submitted to the state. We'll work with the state to get the appropriate signage for that structure, and those signs will go up. More than likely do some PSAs associated with that, notify the businesses around that structure that utilize that route quite a bit, to let them know, to inform them to find a different route. I'm not sure, we'll have to look into how possibly that could be transmitted to like GPS and wayfinding units, if that's possible. I'm not sure how that happens.
So single vehicles that don't have anything hitched are good? Is that what you're saying? I guess I worry about that bridge, there's quite a bit of traffic from KPI and a lot of heavy equipment moving that comes down that street. So I guess, is that, that would then be restricted?
We would want to see that traffic moved over to 21st Street or west on 23rd Street, not over this structure. Correct.
So that then, Adam, would be like when you talk about area businesses, all of the manufacturing, I mean, there's some even further west of that that could use that road as a thoroughfare potentially?
Yes, yep.
Are trucks even allowed on that? Is that a truck street? Can they bring that type of traffic down that one already?
If they have a point of destination close to that, yes, they can use that route off of the truck route.
I think another concern, too, is from a fire department standpoint, if we're going to be heading west, going that side of town with the ladder truck, for instance, we have apartments over there or a fire truck, we're going to be, we're going to have to find a different route.
That is correct.
What is the, obviously, tonight, we have Cedar Street on our agenda. What is the timeframe for 23rd?
So we're currently working with Banner to get a proposal to look at preliminary engineering, going after a preliminary engineering BIG grant to start that process, to identify what a future structure, what the new structure would look like, and what would all be associated with that. It's the beginning process of a replacement project.
Those grants are due August 1st, and then they consider them, the Transportation Commission considers them in October, and then they award, I believe later in the month of October into November, they would award the preliminary engineering grant.
So we're looking like 2026?
For replacement?
Yeah, potentially, if everything goes through as expected?
26 or 27.
That would be, yep, that'd probably be the soonest, yep. And we did apply this year for a PE BIG grant for this 23rd Street structure. That was before the report came back. We were not successful in obtaining that grant. I don't know if this would have changed that, but we'll try again next year for sure.
Is 50 years kind of a typical lifespan for these type of bridges? Or what are the new ones they're building? What are they telling us, how long will those last?
I'll let Lucas answer that question.
Yeah, I would say yes for a double-T structure that's typical on county bridges, but especially on city bridges where you see more salt use, deteriorates these bridges faster. So I'd say 50 years is a pretty good lifespan for this bridge.
Applies to the new ones being built also, that I saw, I suppose?
I would expect to get more years out of a new one than 50. I wouldn't use double Ts again, or I wouldn't recommend their use.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you for your work on this and for coming tonight and presenting this, and appreciate your work with engineering to keep us all safe, I guess, and make sure burners are affected.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. All right, that is the only scheduled public appearance we had tonight, so I do want to open it up to anybody else in the public that wants to appear in front of the commission on something not on the agenda. Eric, I don't believe you're on the agenda tonight, so that qualifies. So go ahead, step up, give your name, just in case.
Eric Van Duzen, Yankton County EMS Administrator. Thank you for the time. As Commissioner Villanueva and I had discussed this, we figured instead of on the agenda, we could just make a quick public appearance, and wanted to give you an update of the AP Triton project, where we're at. Thank you again for partnering with Yankton County on this endeavor. As I had initially reported and proposed this to the commission for Yankton, we knew there was going to be probably a three-to-six-month project, and that's what they had proposed. When I came to you back in September and we agreed to move forward, we started those processes, and they didn't open the Dropbox to start receiving the data until October 23rd. That's when it opened up. As of November 7th, I had everything, I thought, everything in up to that date. I was notified this weekend, yesterday, a matter of fact, there were a couple forms that were missing. I submitted one today and asked where the other two were at, because I couldn't find them, but we're getting on track and should have that done. We're just waiting them to complete the processes on their end. And Amy Leon did report that correctly. We do have a meeting coming up December 12th. It's at 1:00 PM that will kind of give us an overview of where they're currently at and how they foresee things moving forward from there. But as I reported initially, I wanted to be extremely transparent with this and wanted to provide an update, so I just wanted to stop in this evening and give you a quick overview and see if there were any questions, and feel free to reach out in between meetings if need be.
Awesome. Any questions for Eric? All right, I appreciate you coming in tonight and keeping us informed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll be anxious to hear what comes back and keep that process moving, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to appear in front of the commission tonight on something not on the agenda? All right, seeing no movement, we will move on to the consent agenda, in which, if you're looking at the packet, there is nothing under the consent agenda tonight, so we will move on to old business. Number one is Consideration of Memorandum 23-233 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, December 23rd, 2023, from the center, Chris Thury, Executive Director, located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-227, which is a transfer of a location of a retail on-off-sale wine and cider license for January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023, from Morgan LLC, doing business as South Point Gaming Lounge, Kirby Mullenberg owner, at 1101 Broadway Avenue, Suite 109, here in Yankton, to 1101 Broadway Avenue, Suite 109A. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-234 for a new retail on-off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, from Six Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company, Ryan Heine member, located at 2503 Fox Run Parkway, Suite 1. I am going to ask Ross, I believe, unless, yeah, I'm going to ask Ross, there was a lot of information in our commission packet is tied to this, tying back to even opening up a new license that became available because of our increasing population, so a good thing, as you're aware and the commission is aware, we had a bid go out, a sealed bid go out. We did not receive any bids, and so kind of want to walk through the process. There was quite a bit in the packet on options we have tonight, so I want to...
Are you on number three or number four? Just want to clarify real quick. We're still number three, so...
It's three.
Yeah.
Is it four that you need to talk to us about? Sorry about that. I wrote my, turned it over to Ross under three.
I think it's actually number five that we need to address that on. Three and four are actually just routine.
There we go. Disregard everything I just said. That's why I write notes and pencil on my agenda. All right, so number three is a standard request. I take that back, so I would ask what the pleasure of the commission is.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you for that. Any commission discussion, now that I've thoroughly confused everybody? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-235 for a new retail on-off-sale wine insider license for January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2024, from Sixth Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company, Ryan Heine member, again at 23, 2503 Fox Run Parkway, Suite 1. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Now on to number five, five, which actually in my agenda does say package off-sale liquor license. So, this is in Consideration of Memorandum 23-232, requesting commission direction to staff on proceeding with the sale of the new 12th package off-sale liquor license. As I stated earlier, there were no bids received in our commission packet tonight. Several options you have in front of you tonight, so now we'll officially turn it over to Ross to walk us through that.
All right, a little bit of background for you. On August 28th, the City Commission adopted Resolution 23-52, which authorized an additional new retail off-sale liquor license. You can think of it as the same sort of license that you would, you would need to operate like a liquor store. That is a population-based limitation, and Yankton has finally had growth that crossed the threshold, so that the city now has the authority to issue a 12th package off-sale liquor license. At that time, you guys adopted Resolution 23-52, the commission has, to set a fee for its issuance, that's not to be confused with its renewal fee, the governing body may set the fee for the issuance of an off-sale liquor license. This commission adopted within the resolution that an additional 12th package off-sale liquor license be issued in the municipality in calendar year 2024 at a fee no less than $300, but issuance based on sealed bid by an eligible bidder, and staff was given guidance at that time to come up with a sealed bidding procedure, which staff did create and presented to the commission on October 9th. By way of background, staff largely utilized the procedures that the city of Sioux Falls uses. Their population growth has consistently allowed them to have new ones available, and they use this process fairly regularly in the issuance of new licenses. So, at the October 9th meeting, the commission reviewed the proposed sealed bidding procedures and adopted that resolution. The only difference from what was presented to the commission by staff was modifying the recommended minimum bid from $50,000 upwards to $100,000, hoping that there would be some, some bids at that minimum level. Well, as that played out over time, no bids were received at that rate. So, this was already planned to come before you to discuss how you wanted to proceed. In the meantime, the city actually did receive an application for the sealed, well, I guess it wasn't a sealed bid, it was just simply an application for that license. A proposed fee of $500 was presented to the city, and the applicants asked for that This has been presented to you guys, because you, as a commission, get to decide whether to approve the license as requested. So, you have a number of options before you. You actually can accept this offer, because no other application has been submitted. I would give them an A for effort or moxie for submitting a bid, $500 in this environment, but you guys do have the authority to approve that if you wish. I believe the city can, $100,000 is probably too high, but I believe that there is considerable value in this, and I think it's probably worth considering reducing the opening minimum bid and trying again, but that is a decision that you guys can make. So, the way the memorandum put together by Lisa Yardley sets forth the question for you is, one, you can accept the $500 in application from the applicant at this time and proceed with a public hearing notice. You can retain the $100,000 license fee and just set it on a first-come, first-served basis, so you can just say, we have a license available. If you want to pay the city $100,000, it's yours, and just leave it there and wait for somebody to apply. Or you can schedule another bid opening with a lower minimum bid amount. What you guys decide to do is entirely up to you. There is a proposed schedule, if that's the way you guys wish to proceed, that would end up having the, the bid deadline, so the bid opening would be on December 20th, so all the, the applications or all of the sealed bids would need to be received by that date.
Thank you for walking us through that. That might provoke questions, so before I ask for a motion on how you want to proceed, I do want to make sure I give the commission a chance to ask questions.
Mayor Moser?
Mm-hmm.
One option, Ross, that you didn't put on the list is retain the $100,000 minimum license fee and advertise for bids again next year at some point. The reason I say that, I mean, do we have to move that license right now? We know there was a bidding contest for a liquor license last, earlier this year, where the bids apparently reached 340,000, so obviously there's parties to whom it's worth at least $100,000. They didn't bid, I don't know why, but I don't know why we should lower that.
I do not believe that you have an obligation to issue the license.
We shouldn't say that that's an exhaustive list. You could do nothing.
Yeah.
Or you might have a different idea of how you want to handle the license, so...
Sure.
You know, it's something that you can hang on to as well and think about. Again, there's no time limitation there, so... Any other questions from the commission?
I guess a thought going through my mind is, you know, holding on to it, and I, I don't think giving it away is an answer either, but holding on to it does not produce sales tax. You know, I, I think there's a balance we can find, what price it will sell for, and also be able to produce sales tax for the city versus just holding on to this other license. Allow somebody who wants to take a business opportunity and use it, I don't think $500 is the appropriate amount, as much as that's a really, I mean, nice try, but in my mind, but yeah, it's, it's, holding on to it just doesn't make sense as a, from my perspective.
There's nothing hard and fast about these proposed time, these dates on here, too. You guys have the ability to stretch this for a while if you think there needs to be longer advertising, for instance, a greater period of time in which application can be submitted and accepted. That's, that's also within your purview to direct us.
Yeah, all valid points, you know, as we're running into the holiday season, people's thoughts might be elsewhere for sure, if there's something. I think the key point here that you pointed out is, we don't lose offering this if we don't do something this year. We had to add it this year, correct? But we don't lose anything, or we don't lose it if we don't get it out this year.
The only way you'd lose it is if our population dropped so much that we no longer would have one available again. And I believe that is, I want to say that it was 15,000 is when we qualified, and we didn't technically hit that until the census, so... And it seems like, yes, one other question, too. Oh, the, we had to let the state know by September 1st, that's why it was on that August, the date it was on sufficed that we have to let the state know that we're interested in issuing a new one. Doesn't mean you have to issue it.
Thank you for clarifying that. I did want to make sure we understood that. Other commission discussion or questions? I do, we know, know we have the applicant in the audience. I want to give you an opportunity to speak before the commission may make a motion if there's something that you want us to know before I ask for the pleasure of the commission on how to proceed. So, Ryan, come on up and step up to the mic. If you could give us your name, please.
Yes, my name's Ryan Heine, member of the Sixth Meridian LLC, and I wanted to give you just a little bit of background of why we did this application. We were interested in the liquor license for the off-sale for our new location. When that $100,000 minimum bid came out, we were, we were like, well, I guess that's off the table. That's not something that a small business owner has, can come up with in a very short time, even a long time. It, it pretty much cuts out any local entrepreneur from this license. When we discovered that the bid wasn't, that there was no bids, we did some little bit of research, particularly, we started off with looking at the codified law 35411, South Dakota codified law, and it directly opens with, if not fixed by ordinance, the governing body may, by the 2nd of September, and goes on to determine the number of on- and off-sale licenses of, of licenses that the body will approve for the ensuing calendar year and the fees to be charged. So, you have to be setting your fees and your number of licenses by September, September 2nd. Now, you did not set a fee, and additionally, the Yankton city ordinances, particular three, section 3.2, defines classifications and fees of your licenses, and it has an A, which is an on-sale liquor license for $1,500, B, an off-sale for $500, and C, an off, on-off-sale for wine for $500. Now, we just got, went through the very systematic procedure for a wine insider license that was very non-controversial, and it follows this ordinance, follows the South Dakota codified law. It seems that it would also follow that this section also applies to this off-sale liquor license, because this section does not say renewal fee, does not say annual fee. It says fees, period. And so, therefore satisfies 35411 for the fees set in ordinance. You go on, you wanted to do it like Sioux Falls. If you go look up Sioux Falls, they do very specifically set in their code 111, it's pretty extensive, the whole bid process, and they even have a full table here, off-sale, initial fee is specified to be a minimum, minimum bid of $500 in a bid process, clearly defined in ordinance as the South Dakota law requires. And then it has an annual fee of $500. That annual fee of $500 is acceptable to South, to the South Dakota law, minimum $300, so it is over $300. And so, we were just surprised that no one's, no one right away applied for this, because according to the South Dakota law, you already had it in your ordinances, and so your fee was already set. And so, we figured we better apply for it now, better us than some large corporation who already has a team of lawyers behind them. You know, and you look at your ordinances, three, section 3.2, like I said, it also spells out your on-sale license. Now, that's the valuable one. Your on-sale is valuable, because you can also have a, it can also have a lottery license tied to it. It's way more valuable. Those are the ones that are going for hundreds of thousands of dollars. The ones in Sioux Falls, Casey's bid it only and got them for 17,000, multiple licenses for $17,000. So, not as valuable as you thought. But those, but I caution you, because you have this ordinance in your, you have this, if this is in your ordinances. So, if you think about in the future, and you have a, an on-sale possibly coming up, maybe in the next census or something, you need to fix these ordinances. You need to, you need to have this bid process put in the ordinances as if this is, if this is the way you want to do it. And you need to set them up, look at Sioux Falls, because they set that minimum bid, and that forces that minimum bid. That avoids just future people, just, you know, setting a $100,000 bid, a little bit unrealistic, and then ending up in this weird situation where you cut out little guys for no reason. So, those are, that's the reason why I think you should go forward with our license. At least you have the confidence that you're, it's going to a new business, small business here in Yankton, that's very, and community members that are vested into growing here in Yankton, and bringing in a service that is, you know, unique. We're not trying to be another big, excuse me, big, huge liquor store. We're trying to really bring in goods and services that you can't currently get in Yankton, so... I don't know. Michelle, do you have anything you want to add?
I mean, pretty much said it all. I mean...
Yep.
I guess, you know, we were talking after you guys had the bid process, and we were sitting here for the meeting, and you said, nobody bid, and I said, well, why would anybody bid? It's $100,000. And he's like, you know what, let's dig into this a little bit more. So, when he looked, he's like, well, they don't even have this process down in ordinance, so how can they even start this? How can they even start a $100,000 bid? When you look at Sioux Falls, and it clearly states how it needs to go. So, we thought, let's just go and apply. There's nothing that can, you know, it can't hurt anything. So, A, it seems like it needs to be fixed, and B, we wanted it before we found out it was $100,000, and we contemplated putting a bid in, but we had a funny feeling that if, if it was as desirable as you thought, we could never afford it anyways, so, you know.
Just so clear to you, on, also according to South Dakota codified law, are, that is a valid application, and so it does, you can't just sit on it and ignore it. It does need to be rejected, and it needs to be sent back to us, so then we can consider our options from there, so... But we do need to have that license rejected, because it is a valid application, or that application rejected, and you need to give us a reason in writing for that, so...
So, I guess my question would be to Ross. If we were to reject this license, are we violating our own city ordinance?
If it's based entirely on the fee, depends on what you mean by fee. It is a poorly worded outdated ordinance, and I think his suggestion is probably a good one. If we're going to do this process and we, if we anticipate running into this again, let's change the ordinance, so that there's not that ambiguity there. Because it says, "The following classifications and fees are established for dealers in distilled spirits, wines, and malt beverages." It's got three classifications, on-sale dealer, off-sale, off-sale dealer and on and off-sale dealer and wine only. Those don't even line up with the right classifications of licenses. So, this needs to be adjusted. It just says, "Any person who sells or keeps for sale any alcoholic beverage other than malt beverages or wine only for consumption off the premises where sold..." Dot, 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 500, period. So, that, it's pretty clear to me that was designed to be the renewal fee, because that's how the statute reads, no less than 300 nor more than 500, and that's what is happening here. But, you know, his argument is compelling that we need to change this, this ordinance for sure. But you don't have to issue the license.
Other questions? For either Ryan or Michelle or Ross or... If not, then I would ask, what is the pleasure of the commission tonight as related to this agenda item?
I have a question for Ross, again, if I could. So, as Mr. Heine stated, how do we, do we have to reject that tonight if we decide to? Or how does that, what does that look like, then?
I don't believe you even have to reject it tonight, if you don't wish, because this wasn't the public hearing for the issuance of the application. This is revisiting your agenda item. What are you going to do with the process you guys had previously adopted? You taking action on a specific process and the way to issue that license?
Okay.
So, this, I don't believe you have to, I think you should probably consider, you know, postponing to a later date the decision on whether to approve that, the license, because it is a pending application before the city.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yep. Yep.
Ross, do you need time to delve into this more? Would you feel more comfortable if we give you time to make sure we are doing something that's legally correct?
Well, quite frankly, I'm inclined, based on Mr. Heine's recommendation here, to just go ahead and provide you guys with a proposed ordinance, based on prior guidance, that sort of aligns with what Sioux Falls has done. If theirs is in fact, you know, we got the procedures, the processes, their notices, and their resolutions based on how they did it. But if he's correct, I never even consulted whether it was in their ordinances. So it makes sense that we also look at that piece, too, and provide something that aligns with what you guys want to do. I certainly don't want to do anything contradictory to our ordinances.
I guess with that in mind, I would be in favor of, you know, personally, I don't feel there's any rush here. So I would propose that we, I would propose a motion that gives Ross direction to propose an update to our ordinance, to make sure that everything's in compliance, and in agreement with the direction we want to go.
I would also ask that you include in your motion a timeframe to address the application before you. So maybe second meeting in February, or something like that, might be an appropriate timeframe, because you have a few months then to vet a new ordinance, get it approved before action is taken, if that's how you guys want to proceed.
Yeah, so I'd make it the second meeting in February?
If you think that's a reasonable time. I think it's reasonable.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. And now that we do have a motion and second, I would open it up for commission discussion. Seeing no mics coming on, but Ryan's standing up. Ryan, did you want to address the commission now that we have official motion?
I wanted to address the idea of just ignoring or putting our application off until another ordinance. That application was done under the laws as of 1116. So that is, you know, that is our ordinances today. It was made, it's a valid application under the ordinances today. And so it really should be processed that way. Like, you know, I said, you can't reject it tonight. It's not really on the agenda. But it does require that you go through the motions of bringing it through. And I feel like we should be able to present our case. And, you know, we have the interest of our community forward to us, and we also have the interest of building our business here. So.
Thank you for that. So Ross, were you, when you were talking about the end of February, is that when you want to bring the language of the ordinance forward, or we would have a decision for them by the end of, or how are you?
I think that's when you can actually put the approval of their application on, because I think we have six meetings between now and then. If there's a new ordinance, that's plenty of time for you guys to have a chance to review it, and do what you're going to do, and take proper action. And I also tell you guys, you've already taken action regarding, you know, how you anticipate setting this fee. So that's contrary, according to Mr. Heine, it's contradictory to our own ordinances, and our ordinances are outdated and need cleaned up anyway. So I think it's premature to take action. You have no obligation to issue that for the time being.
Any further commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission? Roll call. Well, read back the motion, Al, so we make sure we're all clear on that. I know I crossed off and put some other things on here. So if you could read back what you have to make sure it's what the commission is proposing.
I have it on recording.
Can you turn your mic up?
Excuse me, I have it on recording. I'll try and reflect it, but feel free to correct me, please. The motion was to have Ross update the ordinance, and to have all this done, updating the ordinance, introducing the ordinance, and you acting on the ordinance by the second meeting in February. Does that sound good?
And then we would review the application at the second meeting as well, the second meeting in February.
I, I'm not sure that, I think you should have it passed before that, because bear in mind, the ordinance becomes effective 20 days after publication. So my, my goal would be to have something vetted and approved by the second meeting in January, so it's effective by the second meeting in February. That's how I was visualizing it in my mind. If that means any of you want to kick that can down the road an extra month, just to make sure we got time, that's okay, too. But I can work with that.
If you feel comfortable working within that timeline of January, working through the ordinance change, and then at the second meeting in February, considering the application, then I'm good with that.
Okay.
Should someone else apply in the meantime, what does that mean for the current applicants? Is that a potential risk that they would have? Is that there could be six, seven applications come in, and they're all, now what do we do? That's going to have to be laid out in the ordinance?
Ultimately, I think they'd all be similarly situated to Mr. Heine here. I mean, it really kind of depends on our, how are they presented? Is it just, here's $500, we want it to? And that creates an interesting conundrum for you guys to sort through, because I don't think you have an obligation to issue it to anybody.
As you know, I've got a lot of hats I wear. I really want to caution you about trying to change your ordinances while there's an application in process, like that application's already been put in. If you change, the county's already gone down this road and gotten to some really big trouble in the past already, where applicant applied, and then the county tried to change the ordinances while that, and then applied that, those ordinances onto the new applicant. So I think, I think you're, I think you're playing a little risky there with this idea that you can just ignore this application until you change your ordinances.
I'd like to point out the distinctions here. Those are land use, zoning-related, conditional use permitting issues, as it relates to what a person can do with their own property. There is no property right in an unissued license. There is no property right in an issued license from a governmental perspective, as it relates to alcohol. So in this particular case, it is not a perfect alignment. Mr. Heine's, I understand where he's coming from, but it's not a corollary to what we're doing here.
So the, Ross, the crux of this argument for Mr. Heine, as I understand it, is the ambiguity of the wording in our ordinance as it stands right now, and how that's interpreted.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other further clarification? I know, kind of opened it up, and wanted the motion read back before the vote, but I know there's been some questions after that. So I just want to make sure there's no other questions from the commission in the motion, or what's being suggested tonight?
And you may want to amend your motion, because I stepped in and changed the timeframes.
Okay.
Yeah, oh boy. So, we're in agreement, January is when we would review the current ordinance, and then the second meeting in February is when we would review the application. Is that where we're standing right now?
That's what I've understand, we've kind of settled into, yes. But there was a motion presented, read back by Al, that didn't perfectly align with that. So as long as everybody's clear, that's the purpose of Robert's rules, right? We want to make sure that everybody knows what they're voting on, so there's no confusion for the record.
Ross, Al and I are not confused. The February 24th date, as stated in the motion, we understood to mean that's when the application would be considered, and we'd reverse the...
Perfect.
It makes your timeline shorter, but we know how hard you worked for us to get that done. So I don't think we need an amendment. But of course, that's the commission's pleasure.
I'm good to go. Commissioner Hanoff, to you.
All right. And I did have that in my notes, too, that the application would be reviewed the second meeting in February. So I think there was just a lot of dates thrown around. Yes?
Hi, Emily Vanderheewell. I was, are you going to read back the motion, or no? I was confused.
Oh, sorry, the motion was read back, and then that's where we got confused because of the date. So we can read it back again.
Thanks.
Yes. Doesn't hurt to do that before we vote, just because I know that there was some different dates thrown around.
Okay, I have the motion, that Ross will update the ordinance, and have that ready, and then if you act on it, approved by the second meeting in January, and consider this application at the second meeting in February.
I believe that is correct, for what I have in my notes. And I see head nodding going on as well. Last time, any other commission discussion or questions, clarification? Ooh, anybody in the public? Roll call.
Shram.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Appreciate everybody's discussion on that, and congratulations on the opening of your new location down on Fox Run Parkway. All right, number six. I just will ask for the commission's patience on this. Usually, I read this and then ask for an introduction, but this is one of the areas on the agenda Amy brought up during her city manager report, almost similar to the situation we have tonight, in that there's going to be requests. Coming in front of the city commission tonight is tied to video lottery, prior to the ordinance that is being introduced. So we actually do have the ordinance updated. It's technically being introduced tonight. But because we have two requests tied to video lottery on the agenda after this, I do think it's helpful, we walk through the ordinance that's being introduced. And then, as we get to the other agenda items later on, we all hopefully are on the same page. So I will read it, but I will not ask for an introduction until Ross does that. Tonight is also an introduction, so we're not deciding anything. So I just want Ross to update you. There shouldn't be a whole lot of discussion, because it's just an introduction. But I feel it pertains to what we might be discussing later on, which will give you a chance to ask questions. So number six is an introduction and first reading of ordinance 1076, amending ordinance section 3-3, and establishing December 11, 2023, as the date for a public hearing and a second reading of said ordinance. Ross, please walk us through what's being introduced tonight.
You bet. All right. So just a bit of history, for those tuning in for the first time. It's last summer, the city staff received a request by a citizen to increase or remove the limit, or the cap, on video lottery licenses in town, based on history. That cap was set at 39 back in the mid 1990s, and that cap remained at 39 since that time. The last time the ordinance was adjusted was, I believe, roughly 1999, 2000, although there was some commission discussion, and about the 2008, 2009 era. When, when this was presented by the citizen involved, there was a work session on this, and then staff really dug in to try to get our arms around all things video lottery. And in the process, discovered we had yet another ordinance that historically, when it was drafted, did not align with state law. There were a couple significant problems with it. The first was that section 3-3 limited the ability to transfer validly issued licenses in the community if the cap had been met or exceeded. And that is a direct violation of the statutes that give authority to the city in the issuance of video lottery endorsements. And the second was that the cap did not, or purported to restrict all licenses, when in fact, by statute, the city apparently only has the ability to limit endorsements for video lottery that attached to a retail malt beverage, and what we call an RB license, or a retail wine license, what we call an RW license. So what you see before you, as the new proposed ordinance 3-3, those sections regarding limitations on transfers are removed. So what was subsections C and D have been struck. And then the subsections A and B were adjusted to reflect that the cap, if this commission decides to so retain a cap, would only apply to video lotteries endorsed on retail RB or RW, malt beverage or wine licenses, because those are the licenses the city has the authority to control the endorsement on. The memo that you were provided is an update of what you saw last time, so I'm not going to go through all of that in significant detail. Suffice it to say, it just provides a summary of the way things exist now, who the license holders are, where they're located. And as anticipated, with the discovery that the city commission does not have the authority to restrict the issuance of video lottery endorsements on retail liquor licenses, since that conversation, there are three new video lottery endorsements attached to liquor that the city does not have the contractual right to prevent. So as a result of all these conversations in this room, and then out there in the public, there are now potentially up to 30 more machines that can be operating in the city of Yankton. And we also discovered through this process, just before the last meeting, that there was a license holder that had turned their license back on, that we weren't aware of, that was the boss's Pizza and Chicken. So since this whole conversation began, there's actually four more licenses. So we are four higher than the cap that had previously been set, anyway. So based on the recommendation from the commission to staff in the last meeting, the draft ordinance sets the cap at 33, which aligns with the existing number of retail malt beverage or wine issued licenses. Does that make sense? Those are the, the number that are currently outstanding, video lottery licenses endorsed under RB or RW. So it looks like it is a reduction in the total cap, but it is merely matching that cap to those licenses that we regulate, we as in the city, as a governing body, regulate. So I think that gets you where you want to be. Now, Mayor Moser indicated that it's an introduction, so we don't discuss, but you guys can use this opportunity to discuss. Just because it's the way historically we've done it, doesn't mean that there's anything by statute that prevents you from discussing it. So more power to you, if you wish. We cover more ground that way, I think, especially in light of what's coming later in the meeting. But I do want you guys to be mindful of the requests for the endorsements of video lottery on the, toward the end of the agenda. There's two of them there. If you grant either of those, but you are still interested in aligning with what was discussed last time, meaning you will set the cap at the existing number of RB or RW endorsed video lottery licenses, that you will need to adjust the cap for your second reading, because if you grant either of those, 33 would become 34, or 35, as the case may be. So just be aware of that. If that's still the direction you give to staff, and you do act later, when you come to your second reading at the next meeting, that number will be adjusted, assuming that what you guys, as a board, were inclined to do last time, is what you are inclined to do next time. Everybody's nodding, so it looks like you're all hanging with me.
Yeah, Ross, so we had that, those numbers from about a month ago, where it showed, we already, at least among the cities that were shown on the report, we already have the most machines in the state.
Per capita, yes.
Per capita. And so you say there's another four licenses, or 40 machines, that still could be added to that total?
Correct.
And so put us even farther above the rest per capita. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else want clarification on this, or have any questions? Clear as mud?
And so, you say there's another four licenses or 40 machines that still could be added to that total?
Correct.
And so, put us even farther above the rest per capita. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else want clarification on this or have any questions? Clear as mud?
I'm interested if any of you have changed your position from the vote of the last meeting. Like, as far as staff goes, having that direction, are we presenting something that you're still feeling comfortable with at the next meeting? Because as a, just point of clarification, if you change something at a second reading, you have to have a second second reading. That's literally how they say it. It's a third reading, but they call it a second second reading.
Somebody failed elementary school and couldn't count when they called it a second second, which in essence, Ross, is not all bad if we have to have a second second reading, depending on what the discussion is tonight, because we're not in a hurry to have to close this out for any reason, right? There's no timeframe, kind of like we talked about on the last agenda item.
That's correct. Yeah.
Is there any change of direction anybody is feeling at this point? Or do you want to move forward with that? If you want to move forward, I would then need an introduction.
I would still like to see some way of, some avenue of being able to, if we desire to, to offer additional licenses. We've been frozen and I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. And that was one of the reasons why we kind of were holding until we found out some more about the moving parts. I guess I'm still, would like to see some type of avenue to, you know, for expansion if we desire to. We've been at this, this number with no way of expansion. I mean, we're dealing with the on sale, or excuse me, the off sale liquor, and that was because we hit a population number. It seems to me that we should have some way of, of, through population, be able to, in the future, be able to expand. Just, that's my personal point of view.
But to Commissioner Hunoff's point also, we now have four more, correct?
That's where I'm struggling too, because I was previously in a position where I was thinking, okay, let's maybe look at every 1,000 people we add, and then we could go back to 2,000 and we have 2,000 more people. That's two more licenses. But now, with us adding potentially 40 more machines, I guess I would look at the future rather than looking retroactively, considering how many we're potentially adding to the community in a short period of time.
Point of clarification, one of those we discovered had turned on and didn't fill out the paper, the paperwork, is a liquor license, so they didn't need to ask for commission approval, but they did need to submit a form to City Hall and pay a fee for each machine. That was the boss's Pizza and Chicken. We discovered that it had done this, like coincidentally, while we were going through this process. In fact, we were notified by a citizen that, hey, they aren't on your list. You might want to check them out. And that entity, in fact, did hurry up and get themselves compliant, but they were there. We just didn't know it. So, technically, three new licenses. But there are also a handful, I'll say three or four, additional liquor, retail liquor license holders that do not have video lottery turned on that can. And there are three already that cannot, because they went through a contractual process with the city to, we talked about this briefly at the last meeting. They peeled the video lottery rights off of their liquor and entered into a contract with the city that they wouldn't turn those rights back on, for lack of a better description. And then, they transferred those rights to a retail malt beverage or retail wine that they owned to use at a different location in some other manner. So, in fact, that is what you see on the agenda tonight for Ben Hanton, for Hanton Inc.'s request. If you guys agree to that, that's consistent with what three others had done. So, if you approve that, that will be a fourth, but there are still then, it's three or four liquor licenses that could turn theirs on without restriction, no matter what you guys do. So, that, those are hanging out there. I don't know if that affects how you guys want to vote on this, but it's something I want to make sure you guys fully understand.
And I appreciate it. This has been a learning process, I think, for all of us. The issue that I have with it, with not allowing for expansion is, I think Mason, you had mentioned at a meeting before about kicking a can down the road. We will continue to just have this in place and it'll be a headache for a future commission to figure out how to do this. I would just like to somehow figure out how we can, you know, amongst us, on the commission and in the community, figure out like what do we want and how can we, you know, how can we allow for future growth? Because I think that's what we all want. We all want our community to grow. And I think this is one of the things that we need to plan for growth. And so, I guess that's why I'd be in favor of some form of way, some trigger that says, all right, now there's another license.
So, I, you know, the number of machines in my mind isn't really the problem, because it's the number of locations that offer the gaming that, you know, the people are going to play where they feel most comfortable. They're going to play where they, the operator has a product they like, you know, an environment they like. So, I have a hard time with not having some sort of mechanism in place, like Ben was suggesting, to allow for expansion to give more opportunity. But we created this system that created this economy that has put a lot of private investment into these, into these video licenses, video lottery licenses. And how do we, how can we justify devaluing something when we are the ones who created the system in the first place? Not us, but the city commission. And so, that's really what I think we have to weigh our choices against is that proposition is, how do we protect value and also provide opportunity? And maybe there's not a solution to that that makes any sense. But that's what I'm struggling with is it's, we have a tough decision to make, and I don't want to force that on a commission 10 years from now without some sort of direction that we can come up with that is, it's a compromise, so no one's going to be happy, but something that we can come up with that helps the situation.
So, is there an appetite for adding a license for every 1,000 people from the 2020 census forward? So, look at the 2020 census and the next 1,000 people added to that, you'd add another license?
The census does do annual updates, but really, it's that every 10 years number that is the official number, isn't it, Al?
That's officially how it's done, yes.
That's how we determine what's on our signs and so forth.
And there's estimates every year in between. It's just that there's no, yes, it's like a swag method is how I'd describe it.
Mr. Groton Heiss, did you have something you wanted to address the commission on as tied to this introduction?
Yeah, I just had a quick technical question. I don't, it could have been misreading or was the original ordinance that was proposed, was the number 32 not used at the initial one? That was, and I could be wrong. I didn't read the previous minutes, but I thought the number was 32. It's a technical question in regards to the ordinance.
I can't recall, but it might have been adjusted to reflect for the new, let's see, what that is, is what it shows now is the current count of the RB RW licenses. So, it might have been adjusted based on trying to correspond, making sure the city's records and our file folders and the filing cabinets matched the actual video lottery licenses held according to the state Department of Lottery, because those were not perfectly aligned. So, it might have said 32 and might have been adjusted internally by staff with the understanding being, we're trying to match that number to the existing RB RW. But I can't tell you for sure.
I do understand that and I'm not an attorney, so I just, I don't know if you can arbitrarily do that or do that on your own, or if that has to go again through the commission to make sure your numbers are correct.
That's what the purpose of the first and second reading is. So, technically, the last meeting, when the commission passed a resolution, they weren't adopting an ordinance. That didn't have the effect of law. It was essentially a direction of staff, proceed with the course that's been laid and present the ordinance that you drafted for a first reading. So.
So, you can change the number?
We can change the number up until the time that the second, second reading is passed. But if they, if this commission changes and if it's clear that the course is deviating, you're going to have, any change you make at the next meeting would require another second reading. If all we're doing is adjusting a number because of what's done later, it's clear the intent of the commission is to match the RB RWs, and that would be done for the second reading.
Because otherwise, you'd just be chasing your tail over and over again. So.
That's the.
That was my question, is wondering if that could be adjusted after the initial motion and the initial proposal is laid out.
Yeah. The second reading changes are supposed to be limited to typographical type issues, hence the, I'm trying to make it very clear with the commission what we're doing there, so that if that number changes based on action taken later in this meeting, that's not going to be a modification for the second reading. It would be adjusted by the time they got to the second reading.
Good. Thank you.
And I would clarify, one of the things I discussed with Ross is a typo in the introduction tonight. I don't know if you all caught that. But it says if the pending request by Hanton Inc. to decouple video lottery from its RL to an RB, then the total would need to change to, he has 33, it should be 34. So, we did write it in there that should anything be approved tonight, obviously, at the time of the reading, we would have to make sure that matches.
Thank you, Mayor Moser.
So, of course, the commission, Madam Mayor, can change direction and we can rewrite an ordinance. This ordinance was written based on the direction we got from this commission previously. So, and my personal feeling is that there's applications based on what the direction of the commission was going to be or was going to be considered. So, you know, there is another consideration for you to, you know, move through the process of this ordinance. The explanation was given, so to keep everything clear in everyone's mind. And if you want to do something different, give staff direction to change that. But you can do as you wish, but if we're going to change direction now, you know, I'm not sure that's what was expected when we published the agenda tonight, that we were going to, you know, do that. I offered that clarification just to keep everybody's mind clear of what we're going to be doing. But if we're going to change direction in the ordinance and come up with a way to provide for more licenses, then I feel like that's something we should make clear that we're going to have a discussion about with the community. Just my opinion, which I know doesn't matter. Well, it matters in terms of, I'm not voting on it, but it would, I think, help to keep things clear for us.
I'm fine with proceeding with what we have before us tonight and having this discussion at a later time. There's no rush, and I think we're all curious to see how this plays out with the number of machines being added to the community.
So, can I get an introduction?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Number one is memorandum supporting first reading of memorandum 23-225, supporting ordinance 1075, the second supplement to the 2023 annual appropriation, ordinance 1064 and setting December 11, 2023 as a second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. What is your pleasure? Do you want, do you want an introduction or do you want to move the memorandum? I'm not clear about that. Huh? Just an introduction? Thank you.
Introduced.
Thank you. Great clarification. It did not say that in the type, but it did say it in the description, so thank you for that. Number two is consideration of memorandum 23-231 recommending that the city write off uncollectible utility accounts in front of you tonight in the commission packet is the total of $10,550.25. What is your pleasure? So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this?
Can you clarify what outlawed means? I don't recall seeing that in the past, but maybe I've just forgotten.
Unfortunately, I'll have to get back to you. Lisa had written this up and I had not looked at it until this afternoon, and I sent her an email and didn't get a response. You know, she is homesick, so I'll have to get back to you on what that is.
Thanks.
The only thing I could think of is possibly there's a statute of limitations, but I don't know that. So, I'll send that out to you in an email, so. And again, as is pointed out in the memo, I remind all of you that staff does a pretty good job of keeping track of anybody that we have written off, and should that person ever come back, we require them to settle up again. And I'd guess that happens at least a couple times a year, where somebody has been gone from our community. We have written it off. They come back to turn it on. If we find that, the only way it gets turned on is if they pay that back up. So, we do keep track of it, but accounting wise is what you're really doing, is you're writing it off.
Go ahead, Ross.
When the city tries to collect these bad debts, they use credit collection services. Credit collection services, when they're able, they do reduce these debts to judgments. And judgments can have a life, they're at least 10 years and they can be renewed for another 10. So, these debts can remain collectible for a considerable period of time. So, we're not doing anything to discharge these judgments. These are valid debts, even though they're off the books. It's, like Al said, it's strictly for accounting purposes. It's the same thing hospitals do and things of that nature.
Thank you for clarifying that. Is there any, then, other commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-236 and resolution 23-69 regarding the library contract between the city of Yankton and Yankton County. I see Dana making it to the mic, so maybe just a quick walkthrough for the commission on the agreement that's in place that's being proposed tonight.
Sure. So, the county agreed to contribute $20,000 for 2024. In 2023, it was 15,000, so we were excited to see that number go back up. And the contract was in your packet and it does, there was nothing changed in the contract besides that amount. So, county residents that live outside of city limits but in Yankton County do pay $20 a year per household for their card, and then that kind of balances out with the county contribution to help support the library. So, nothing else changed unless you have questions for me.
Thanks for that.
I'm curious. It says we have 883 cardholders residing outside the city limits. I'm just asking this because I'm curious what percentage that is of the total, but what is our total cardholders?
So, we have 5,490 total cardholders, so it equals about 16% of our total cardholders.
Any other commission questions? I know we don't have a motion yet, but just if there's any clarification questions before that. All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Moved to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Having that, again, is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? We'll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries and our thanks to the county commissioners and the county for partnering on this. A great service. I know their motto is, you know, there's more than just books at the library. So I know there's a lot that Dana and her staff do there. So excited to be able to offer that to our city and county residents. All right. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-240, considering approval of a video lottery license restriction agreement, removing video lottery at Hanton Inc., doing business as Ben's Brewing Company at 222 West 3rd Street here in Yankton. Ben Hanton, president, combined with request for video lottery endorsement on malt beverage license RB-27600 at Hanton Inc., doing business as Ben's Brew Station at 719 Walnut Street. Before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I would ask Ross to walk us through. We did just kind of talk about this and I know he brought it up, but again, just to make sure we're understanding what the request is here tonight in front of us.
Correct. So this is what I had mentioned earlier. It's an action involving essentially two things. One of them is approval of the contract under which in exchange for this commission granting the, the endorsement of video lottery on the RB license located at the brew station location, Mr. Hanton will essentially terminate his video lottery license endorsed under the retail liquor license downtown at Ben's Brewing Company. That contract runs with the license in the same way that maybe an easement would run with the land. And it's the notion that if Mr. Hanton would ever, or his business would ever sell this retail liquor license to another business, another holder would be similarly bound because it's the license that's tied up. It's not that specific location or this specific owner. Now, a couple points that, that we must keep in mind, he's not forever restricted because if Mr. Hanton, for instance, would decide to close the location downtown and maybe merge everything into the brew station, if he decides that he doesn't want to have two locations and just open one mega complex at the brew station, for instance, if he reunites the licenses back under one roof again, this restriction can go away. Or if this license is, if the retail malt beverage license is ever sold off and then a new one acquired back at the old location, wherever that, that liquor license is, if it's ever re-unified with a, a malt beverage or retail wine endorsed for video lottery, this could go away again. It's, and similarly, if he were to sell the retail liquor to somebody that holds a retail malt beverage or wine endorsed, endorsed for video lottery, that would again be a consolidation of these rights. So this agreement could go away. So the whole point is unless it has video lottery to merge with it again, it cannot have video lottery. Hope that that's clear.
Basically it can't add new machines to what we already have.
Correct. Yep. And the agreement is necessary because as I discussed with you guys earlier in this meeting, this body does not have the authority to tell the holder of a retail liquor license that they cannot have video lottery associated with that liquor license. So instead, we're end around in that rule by having a contract with the holder of it saying, if you reapply and the state issues you a video lottery license, you got to shut it off or we can, you know, non-renew or terminate your liquor license. So it gives you guys a contractual basis to not increase the number of existing licenses. And that's important for you guys to understand too, because if the ordinance as presented, as introduced, were to be approved, the new cap applies to retail malt beverage and retail wine. So this type of arrangement would no longer be available under the new ordinance. So if this commission were to approve Mr. Hanton's request, this would be, and then also adopt the ordinance as drafted, this would no longer be something that could be done moving forward. This would essentially be the last one that could make it in under the wire because this one still complies with the existing ordinance because the net effect is not to increase or create additional video lottery. It's just taking it from an RL and moving it to an RB.
Keeping it with the same owner, basically just, for lack of ease, transferring the location of where he could put the lottery, the licenses.
Correct.
I mean, I get that there is that technical glitch, but it's the same owner just picking a location of where he may or may not want.
Right. Just be advised if this retail RB is moved over to the brew station, remember the statute says the city does not have the authority to prevent a subsequent transfer. So Mr. Hanton is, is represented to me, this will, this will be something he can utilize in some of the portions of that large building that, that he's not currently utilizing. But he would not be in any way legally restricted from selling or transferring that RB with the video lottery endorsement to somebody else. So I don't know if that weighs in, in your decision, but just be aware that would be a right. And I, I do not feel comfortable trying to contractually restrict that because there's a statute that specifically says that, that once a license is endorsed, the commission cannot consider the existing caps or those other criteria moving forward for the transfer of a license. So just understand you would be approving it as a, a new RB that could be sold or transferred in any way Mr. Hanton saw fit in the future. He just would not be able to turn the video lottery back on, onto the liquor unless there is a reunification.
And if he transfers it to an RB, is he required to turn that license on? Or can he just hold it as well if he?
It's an endorsement attached to the license. So once it's been approved, that license now has a box checked on it. It can have video lottery.
I understand that, but if he, if he, if it's approved tonight and he transfers it, he doesn't have to use it if he chooses not to at this point? I'm just curious.
That is correct. It's an endorsement on the license. Whether he uses it or not would be up to him.
I do know Mr. Hanton and it looks like Sheila are here in the audience tonight. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to present to the commission before I ask them what the pleasure of the commission is? You'll wait and reserve it if there's a need to say it after that, okay?
So I nailed it first try, huh, Ben?
All right. Wanted to give them a chance to do that. If not, and there's no further questions, thank you for walking us through that. Ross, what is the pleasure of the commission tonight?
Move to approve.
Second. We do have a motion and a second to approve what's being presented to this motion tonight. Is there any commission discussion now that we have a motion and a second?
Ross, you may have said this and I might just be not understanding correctly, but so should Mr. Hanton recup, or bring that RB lotto license back to his location that has a liquor license? Can he recouple that back with the liquor license? And then our ordinance would say 34 and there's actually 33 RB liquor or lotto licenses because it's back on the liquor license, which we can't oversee? So then we'd have this open license again?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
So once it's decoupled, that's not in forever? They could be married again?
It could be recoupled back into the liquor license, which we, our ordinance would say 34 RBRW licenses, which we'd have 33 at that time.
That is correct, yes.
Right. Which, is that a big deal if we say we could have 34? Because then technically that, we could then legally add it if he would marry that again. We could add another one.
I don't see, I'm just curious.
I just wanted to make sure, okay.
That could happen.
It could, yes.
I see people separating and getting back together all the time, right? All right. Oh, yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Question. Ross, you indicated that there's precedence for this. I'm sure that we've had businesses that, or business owners that have multiple businesses. Can you tell us more about that?
This would be the fourth time, yes. I, at the last meeting, I believe there was two because digging through the city's records, we were able to find the records for two. And Mr. DeHaef got up and said, I believe this was also done at the country club at Hillcrest. And sure enough, we went back through the records and yeah, that was the third. So this would be the, the fourth if it's approved. This isn't, this isn't a new creative idea. I mean, I think it's still a creative idea, but it's, it's the fourth time it's been done. But if the, again, I would, I would just remind all of you that if this is approved and the ordinance is approved, this would probably be the last time that it would be done.
So though this newfound knowledge we have on video lottery and the amount of tracking that has to be done, is that done through finance? Are they, where that's housed?
It was a paper library system in a filing cabinet with many of those records moved to, correct me if I'm wrong, Al, but I think boxes in the basement. And you know, this, this has been quite a, a deep dive into city records to kind of rebuild and confirm everything that we thought we had. Now we all have a much better understanding, but moving forward, a lot of this material, I, my understanding in talking with Lisa is or will be spreadsheted. There's going to be something more like a chain of title, paper drill.
And keep in mind that it, what's different is in the past, we had a video cap of 39 and the only time we exceeded that was when we annexed a building or a previous licensee into the city, which you don't have the ability to restrict. So we were always under the understanding that that's the number we were working with. And we were unaware that we couldn't restrict the liquor.
Yeah. And that is something I have just learned through this process too. There was a brief period of time when that location was annexed into the city that we had one more than our cap. And then shortly thereafter, Minerva's stopped operating video lottery on their liquor. So then we fell back to our cap. So I, I was not aware we had ever crossed the threshold until Boss's Pizza and Chicken turned theirs on on their liquor. But that, that was a brief period in time when, when we were over. So that was an interesting update for me.
And as we talk about history and deep dives, we still have, there's still a list out there also, correct? As we have these discussions moving forward.
A list? What do you mean?
A list of people that wanted the licenses.
Oh, yes. There was no, just as everyone recalls, there was no legal foundation for that list. So depending upon what's done here, we would contact people on that list if they're still...
24 years ago, you put your name in.
Go around and indicate what's changed and why that's different. And we do our best to communicate with them.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other commission discussion questions? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? We'll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hunoff.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-239 regarding an application for the endorsement of a video lottery on a retail on-off sale wine license, number RW-23602 for Fox Stop Holdings LLC. James Groton High's owner doing business as a Fox Stop located at 1316 West 30th Street. As we did with the last agenda item, I'm going to ask Ross to walk us through what is being requested of this agenda item tonight.
Okay. So this is similar to what Mr. Hanton was asking for in the last action with the exception that this one does not include an agreement to turn off another one. So this is just basically a plain vanilla request. Can I please have an endorsement for video lottery on my RW? As I understand it, unless there's something I'm misunderstanding, I believe that's, that's what the request is. So it's, will, will, will this commission grant him that endorsement on the RW? As the current ordinance that we have on the books reads, the operative language that authorized the deal for Mr. Hanton was that the action doesn't create an additional license exceeding the cap. On this particular case, it, it does have that effect. So the language that authorized, gave you the ability to do that for Mr. Hanton, I believe, prevents you from doing it in this particular case. You guys have the authority to change your ordinances. I would recommend that if you're inclined to grant him this consent or this endorsement, that you would delay the approval or denial until after the ordinance is similarly changed because I do not recommend you act in violation of your ordinance. Now, we talked about how the existing ordinance has mechanical problems because it regulates beyond the scope of what you have the authority to regulate, to the extent that it applies to retail liquor licenses. But in this particular case, he's asking for the endorsement on a retail wine license, which you do have the authority to regulate. So my recommendation would be that you deny it because it's in violation of your ordinance or wait to take action until you have made whatever changes you're going to make so that it is not in violation of your ordinance, if that is what this body wishes to do with that ordinance. So clear as mud.
Commissioner Schramm brought up a good point earlier about, you know, kind of this economy that we created, but allowing for expansion. So Ross, my question to you is, and I know there's fellow video lottery license holders out here, Mr. Groton High says, I know you're denying it, but my question is, or requesting that we deny it, this economy. So if we would, let's say it's approved tonight, he just gets one, then there's no fee payments like others have had to pay? Is that correct? Is that what's being asked tonight so I can understand? Or how does that work?
Yeah. He would just have the fee consistent with what statute allows, which is $50 per machine that he would put in. There would not be a, there's no statutory authority for the city to sell these rights. You know, that would make it substantially more palatable to just jack up the, the limits and then sell them all for a hundred thousand apiece or whatever. But we don't have the statutory authority as a governing body to charge a fee in that way. So if approved, this would be, yes, your, your RW now has an endorsement and you have to pay a fee. But remember you currently have an ordinance that says you can't create additional licenses. And that's what this would do. I would, there is local history. Mr. Heine, when he was here, said, you know, be careful acting in, in violation of your own ordinance in the planning and zoning sphere. The county had a number of times tried to act in contravention to their own ordinances and in doing so got caught up in a whole collection of lawsuits and lost some and settled others. But the end result was, the lesson was eventually learned, change your ordinances instead of violating them. So that's my strongest recommendation to you guys. But I believe I answered your question before I went into that.
No, I appreciate that. I was curious on that. Thank you.
I mean, I think we just, there's, any action tonight would be the only, in my mind, the only we could do is to deny it because it's in line with the ordinance. I don't think we should set a precedent of, you know, going over top of our ordinances as they stand. But my preference would be to essentially table this until we have an ordinance that could approve or deny this until after that discussion happens. So that'd be my preference because I, I don't think we can actually make anything but a denial request at this time.
Yep. And one point of clarification, there is problems with the structure of our existing ordinance. What's, what you see before you, that you guys introduced earlier for... What you see before you, that you guys introduced earlier for first reading, is designed to clarify some of those problems. The invalid portions of that ordinance, as we see it on the books today, does not apply specifically to this request. So there is both an ordinance independent of section 3-3 as it appears on the books, a separate standalone ordinance. And then also, if you go into the original passage of ordinance, section 3-3 as it sits on the books, both the standalone ordinance and the one that was passed by this commission, the actual action taken, included language that says if any portion of this ordinance is invalid, the remaining portion that is valid remains valid. Does that make sense? That's a very standard included language on ordinances today. And we also have a curative ordinance that stands on its own that says the same thing. So I just want to point that out. My hunch is that was something that was on the tip of Mr. Groton Heiss's lips as he was walking. Okay. But I do want to point that out because it is, you know, what does it mean if there's a portion of this ordinance that we know is invalid and we're in the process of actually fixing or changing it? Does that mean we have no cap if there's a portion? The answer to that question is no, there's a cap. It's, the language that we have that's enforceable does still apply, but it needs to be fixed. Sorry to overwhelm you.
No, that's okay. There's a lot to go through and discuss, and that's exactly why we're doing this. Mr. Groton Heiss, did you want to address the commission before I ask what the pleasure of the commission is?
Yeah, probably just a couple of things, you know, just to, I guess, explain. I have a video lottery license, but I don't. Okay? I'm in a revenue share agreement. I think I've had conversations with all of you. I want my own. I'm willing to pay. I've always been willing to pay, not asking for one for free. But I understand the commission cannot charge, just like they're trying to do with the packaged liquor license. So from what I've understood from this, I guess, exercise of going through, for better language, of the video lottery ordinances, both with the state and with the city, the cap of 39, now it reveals to us that if we can't control the retail liquor licenses, then we are not really at our cap then for RB and RW licenses. So if we have 39, but 33 of them are attached to RB and RW, to me, that poses the question, well, I think there are six available then under RB and RW availability if we cannot control the RL licenses and their endorsements. Secondly, you know, the passage of the previous agenda item, that there is giving a new license. I know there's the technicality of starting with an RL license, transferring it to an RB license. You just put one into an RB license as a commission, okay? We've blown through our cap. There's, we have 43 licenses, 42 licenses, whatever there is. We've blown through the cap because of the RL issue. We can't control it. So we haven't reached our cap on the RB, RW of what the city commission can control. I think also, as you go back to read the initial ordinances, when it was put in place back in 25 years ago, I don't remember the exact year, but the verbiage is also, I think, in regards to establishments. How many establishments in the city of Yankton will be allowed to have licenses? If you look at your list of license holders, we are at 19 establishments because there are several establishments that have multiple licenses. So again, I don't think we're at our cap. I think we're under our cap based on some language that's in our ordinances that, using Ross's language to me in a private conversation, needs surgery. And I agree. So I think my application for an RW licensed endorsed with video lottery would be under the existing cap as it stands.
Ross?
Oh, sorry, Ross, did you?
All right, so from the perspective of the state, and if you look at the way licensing is done for video lottery, every license is a separate establishment and has its own separate building footprint. So if you look at the licenses, maybe that applies to either pinups or the, oh, the one that's in Morgan Square. If you look at their applications, they have a collection of establishments within their unit, and each of those spaces needs to be sort of cordoned off and have its own sales tax license that attaches to it. So yep, establishment in the traditional sense that we all think of it is, Mr. Groton Heiss is right, but from a licensing standpoint, each license is a separate establishment. So it's a legal term of art. But as far as, you know, the argument of what the commission was intending when they passed the language that's on the books, you know, maybe he's right. Maybe it was their intention when they did it to have 39 different locations because I think the idea of combining them was far less common or maybe didn't even exist back then. But as far as establishments go in the legal sense, there are 43 establishments now because of the way the licensing process works.
Any other commission questions, discussion, thoughts? With that, oh, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to deny the request.
We do have a motion and a second to deny the request. Now that we actually have a motion, I would open it back up to the commission for any questions, thoughts, comments.
On the, on the video lottery, so moving it from the liquor to an RB, reason, and I had hesitation on that, but the reason that I went with that was because there was precedent. It has happened before, and that was my reasoning. Again, we've talked about, I've talked about this with numerous people, we don't get to vote on these things as gray. We get to vote on these things as black and white. I can be 48% with somebody and about 52% the other way, and I have to vote the 52%. And it turns it into a black and white situation. James, I completely sympathize with the situation. I'm just looking at it, reason for voting before was because there was historical precedence, but the reason for not voting on this one is because I don't have historical precedence. And that would be the reason why I would be different, although you could look at the two and could clearly, you could clearly see some parallels, but I just want to be distinct as far as why, you know, reasoning, you know, we vote, but I think it's important to give reasons for why we're voting, and that would be the reason why I'm leaning that direction right now, unless, of course, something comes out here in our discussion that changes my viewpoint.
Anybody else on the commission?
You know, I think it just is interesting that I brought that point with the last discussion that, you know, if, say, Mr. Hanton would recouple his liquor license to a video lottery license, and then we're, ordinance wise, we're at 34 again, that we did essentially create an opportunity for a new license that wouldn't have existed. So I can see where James is coming from in that logic. I still think we, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Johnson's motion. I just, I think, I would prefer to see us maybe table this until we have a decision on the, a final decision on the ordinance, but that's my preference. So I guess I would like to make maybe an amendment to the motion to table until we have a formal, updated ordinance in place.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second to the amendment?
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend to table this until after the ordinance is set. So with that in mind, is there any discussion? Ross has his mic on.
Robert's rules enthusiast would say this is a motion to postpone.
A motion to postpone. So does that take precedence over the motion, the motion to postpone?
Okay, so technically what that does is not, it's not an amendment to the motion, it's an order of priority. It's a separate motion with a second that if you vote it, you don't have to re-vote it again because it's a, based on orders of priority, it pushes off what's on the floor to a later date.
Is that agreeable, Commissioner Schramm and Commissioner Brunick? Okay. So then that takes precedence. Is there still discussion?
Sure, you guys can discuss it, but your vote will be on the priority motion to postpone that decision.
Okay.
One thing I would like, though, is technically, when you do that, you're supposed to say when you're going to take it up again. So that makes it hard, right? I mean, how long is this going to take? And it depends on how many meetings it's going to take you to get a finalized ordinance.
So how do we know that?
I'll just tell you, don't leave it on the table forever. How's that?
So the next vote is going to be to deny the request or to postpone denying the request?
To postpone to a later date, the motion that's on the floor, yes.
So Ross, can we do that without a set date? Or could we put it out like it can't go past June 1 or something? Because you would hope by then we would have, even if we have to have a second second reading.
There's no statute. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. There's no statutory rule that we set it for a given date, but in the meantime, it's an open application. He's like Mr. Heine, you know, when are you guys going to take this up again? Because he's got a request in the city that he's entitled to have some action taken at a given point. So I'd feel inclined to say we'll take action no later the next day and set it sometime in the spring. I don't know. And you guys can take it up sooner if you wish, stick it on an agenda once you got your ordinance passed.
So motion to postpone as it's written now and take it up technically after the ordinance is set, is that a timeline?
There's nothing statutorily that forbid you from doing that.
Have we lost everybody? Are we all understanding? So we do have a motion and a second to postpone this until after the ordinance discussion reading, public discussion has taken place. Commission questions, discussion?
So we're postponing the vote of the denial.
Correct.
To a later meeting.
If approved.
If approved. And so then he will have to come back then, and we will have to discuss it again, and then another motion will have to be made, a brand new motion to potentially approve.
The motion's already been made. So you're just picking it back up again and then acting on it.
Okay.
Right, and I think that's what Commissioner Hunoff said, right? We're just postponing the motion of denial.
Correct.
Mr. Groton Heiss is at the mic, and then I will see if anybody else in the public has thoughts.
So I want to make it clear that I'm applying as the ordinance stands right now, not after a new ordinance is set. I'm applying as it stands right now. And this is probably more of a question for Mr. Denherter in regards to the cap. If we cannot control the retail liquor licenses, I didn't, I maybe missed you addressing that part of what I discussed. If we can't control that, in my opinion, we are not at the cap.
So the ordinance reads, "At any time, the total number of establishments with video lottery endorsement equals or exceeds the limit set forth in this ordinance, no additional licenses for the operation of video lottery machines shall be issued by the city." So you wouldn't be here before us if you had a retail liquor because we couldn't stop you either way. You just, you get that endorsement if you want it. But because the total number of licensed establishments exceeds 39, and you have to get the city commission's approval, that, the commission can tell you no because they have the ability to tell you no on a retail wine license. This doesn't say retail malt beverage or wine because if it did, we wouldn't have to change it in the first place. But it says total number of retail licenses, or the total number of establishments with video lottery. So the action would have the effect of creating more video lottery if they were to grant it. So I have given them the legal opinion that they would be violating their ordinance. You don't have to agree with me, but I stand by that opinion. So they, I've told them they would be violating their ordinances if they approve it as it stands now.
But you also just issued another license tonight via the legality of an RL license now being put on an RB license. So you really had just established a new license.
I use the exact same basis to say it's okay because that action does not create any additional licenses because it's a net zero. We didn't create any new ones because the one that was turned on corresponded with one that was turned off.
But I think if you look back at your city records, and I'm sorry, Ben, because I'm going to use you as an example, I believe this is the second time that Ben has done this.
People have told me that before, but I found no records.
It has created another license.
Yeah, I have not, we have not run across any records that this has been done. So if it has, that is news to me. So, and there's also no corresponding agreement in the file for Ben similar to the one that has been approved today. So if prior administrations authorized that, without me sitting in this chair, they didn't do it right because they didn't shut off the malt, the video lottery with the liquor.
So I guess to answer some of the questions in regards to precedents, there's your precedents. It's happened. So.
Ben's here if this commission wishes to ask, but that's not, that's not the agenda item we're talking about.
Well, I had heard that. I'd be interested to know if that's correct, Ben.
Does he have to answer that? Sheila, I hate to say this, but could you come up to the mic and say that just so we have it? We broadcast these meetings. But yes, Mr. Hanton is not required to come up and answer that question. It is not an agenda item tonight. If he wants to answer it, he can, but Sheila?
I don't think there's any reason to answer it. Everything has been done in compliance with the retail liquor license previously, and what we did tonight was absolutely permitted. In fact, I don't think you had much basis to deny it unless you thought Ben Hanton was an unsuitable character to have a video lottery license.
Anybody else in the public or on the commission wish to address us or the commissioners' comment? If not, we are voting on the motion to postpone a decision until after the ordinance is set. We'll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hunoff.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Minor.
No.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
No.
Weber.
No.
Benson.
No.
Mayor Mosher.
Motion to postpone until after the ordinance is set has been denied, which brings back up then the active motion of denying the request tonight. So with that in mind, I would open it back up to commission questions or discussion.
So with that in mind, I would open it back up to commission questions or discussion. None here. Anybody in the public want to address the commission on the denial of this application, which is the motion in second in front of us? Roll call.
Hunoff.
No.
Johnson.
I apologize, I misspoke.
Yeah, I was going to just ask.
I was thinking about the last one. Yes, if I could still change that.
Yeah, this is a motion to deny, by the way.
Yes, I want to vote for the motion to deny because that is the city attorney's recommendation. It's not a conjunction of the two.
Commissioner Hunoff, your microphone is not on.
Yes to the motion to deny.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunnig.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-228 recommending the bid of two new steel transfer station walking floor trailers be awarded to Northern Truck and Equipment of Sioux Falls, South Dakota in the amount of $223,000, $212,000, of which $250,000 was budgeted. What's the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Do we even have all of our walking trailers that we've ordered? Is this still keeping us ahead? We do have them all now. Okay. I was just curious. Has nothing strummed into what's being, I was just curious. I knew we were behind a couple of them. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunnig.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-221 recommending authorization of the city manager to execute the agreement for engineering services for the replacement of structure number 68-121-204 on Cedar Street with Banner Associates, Inc. In the commission packet tonight, this is not to exceed $250,000, and this is to prepare final plans, and bidding documents is tied to bridge replacement that was discussed earlier this evening. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunnig.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-222 recommending the city commission accept the completed reconstruction of Fifth Street reconstruction project and authorize the finance officer to issue a manual check to Masonry Components, Inc. in the amount of $1,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunnig.
Aye.
Hunoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes new business. Moving on to other business, it is my understanding that Commissioner Hunoff does have something on the agenda under other business.
Thank you. This won't take long. I just would like to ask the commission, request a, another work, a work session next month or in the near future to continue the discussion of the city's observed holidays. I understand an action was taken at the last meeting. I know it was done with good intentions, but I thought it missed the point of what I was hoping we could accomplish when that issue was originally raised. And I have quite a lot to say about this issue, and I would appreciate the time to have that work session and generate some additional dialogue among commissioners.
Is there anybody else on the commission that wants to bring this forward to a work session? All right. Moving on then would be to adjourn into executive, executive session to discuss personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2, per the update from the city manager earlier this evening. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have, we have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, we are adjourned into executive session. For those not sticking around, have a good evening.